All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. The time is now 5:07 and we're going to call this meeting to order. And I think now is your turn. It's on the agenda for Water Works. Wonderful. And item number one on the agenda is citizen communication. Okay, and so we have no citizen communication. Moving on to the presentation and discussion on Harlingen Water Works System Water and Wastewater Master Plan.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Commissioners, Utility Board, President of the Department of Water Works. We're here today to call this meeting to present our water wastewater master plan. We've worked a long time on this, put a lot of time and effort into it. I do have, this is the agenda for our meeting. I have some introductory comments. We're not here to hear much from any of these people about our master plan consultant.
Tim, can I ask you something? Would it be possible for you to make your presentation from the mic for the people or? No, not in echo, but you should hear.
I don't hear.
Tessie.
There you go.
Okay.
It was the mayor's threat that we might do.
So I know that this meeting is broadcast and so for those who are joining us who don't know me, my name is Tim Skoglan, General Manager for Harlingen Water Works System. We're here to talk about Harlingen Water Works' water and wastewater master plan. The meeting agenda, I've got some background comments to make to set the context for why we're here and why we have a master plan to discuss. We're going to turn it over. The bulk of the, the, the meeting is going to be our master planning consultant from Freezer Nichols, who's spent a lot of time with us and been very patient. And then if we have time, we'll wrap it up with some additional context and future steps that we will need to take. A master plan is very foundational for some major decisions that will be happening in Harlingen. So, our prior focus had been, over the past decade, had been on our treatment plant infrastructure. And we spent a lot of time doing that. There was a 2008 master plan for our treatment plant and some lift stations that was conducted. Our last capital improvement plan covered the period of 2014 to 2017, and that was an in-house effort. We believe that it's been more than two decades since we've had a comprehensive water and wastewater master plan. On the treatment side, we had completed our major projects. I think most of you know our wastewater treatment plan out on Harrison was a big investment. It was completed around that time. And so in 2017, we began to turn our focus toward conveyance infrastructure. And by conveyance, we're talking about the water distribution system that conveys potable water from our plants to our customers and our wastewater collection system that collects wastewater and transmits that to the wastewater treatment plant. The infrastructure that we're talking about, piping networks, water towers, even pumping at our plants. On the wastewater side, we've got gravity sewers, force mains, and lift stations. To do a proper assessment in master planning, to understand your capacity, you really need to employ some sophisticated hydraulic models. And this requires a network model and it requires high-quality data. So we began in 2017 with the implementation of a geographic information system that in simplest terms is a database of all our assets and tying those assets and all the information that we know about them to geographic coordinates on the surface of the earth, both horizontal and vertical. Elevations, diameter, and so forth, a lot of information that's stored in that that would otherwise be not so readily accessible. What you're seeing here in this image is a network. Your GIS establishes the connectivity between pipes and so you understand how your flow is going and how it gets to where it eventually needs to be. This is an image, a screenshot of our current geographic information system. So you can click on any asset, whether it be a manhole, a valve, a pipeline, and you will see a pop-up that has basic information. The GIS contain, can contain more information than just that, but this is a very powerful tool. We wanted this to be able to extract that for master planning purposes. But this does not collect your data. So we concurrently began a high-precision GPS survey of the assets in our system. And this included hydrants, valve meters, lift stations, and manholes. Everything that is surface discoverable that you can see. We didn't do excavation. That would be prohibitive. For manholes, we looked at manhole material and condition. For sewer pipe, we opened up the manhole lid, did an investigation to look at the material, to look at the depth and the diameter. And so we want to know, it's very important on sewer pipelines that you know the elevation because your capacity is dependent on slope. If you don't have a good idea of your slope, you're not going to get a good model prediction. So, we had completed that sometime in 2019. I think we completed a little bit after we contracted with Freezer Nichols to conduct our master plan. The scope of work is limited to conveyance. We're not talking about internal plant improvements. We're not talking about our service centers, our warehouse, our main office. Those are not included. If it has to do with the treatment, but not necessarily capacity, that is not in the scope of this particular master plan. We did hold a joint workshop in 2021. I think many of you had attended that at that time. We went through, I think we spent four to six hours on that. It was informative, but we had some additional things that we needed to accomplish and we wrapped that up early this year. There was a request made to delay this presentation until the elections were over and our runoffs and so forth because this commission is going to be with us for the next two years before the next general election. So with that, I will stop talking. I'm going to turn it over to our Freezer Nichols team. I would like to introduce Jessica Brown. She's a Vice President with Freezer Nichols. She was born and raised in Edinburgh, so I believe you're an Edinburgh bobcat. Oh, North Cougar. I made a mistake. Back in my day, there was one in school, so. At any rate, and another interesting point, she actually ran for school board up in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. And she waxed the incumbent, so she's, I think you've won again. So she's got a lot of talents. We're very pleased to have her on, onboard. Tyler May is the project lead for wastewater. Matt Shorsh is project lead for water. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over.
And I would say, we're inviting interactive discussion. I think the value in this is really going to be in the discussion to make sure that everybody understands question and answers, comments, suggestions, all of it.
Absolutely. Feel free to ask questions anywhere along the way because I know sometimes we get five slides in and you think, what was my question? So feel free to let us know any questions you have along the way. So obviously, we're very excited to be here presenting to all of you together. This has obviously been a very critical project for the Water Works. And so some of the things we'll talk about, just, you kind of heard our introduction of the project team, so I won't really spend time on that. And we'll just kind of talk about the master plan process. What are some of the different steps? How do they kind of dovetail in together? Then we'll walk you through how we developed the projections, so, because that's what sets the stage for our capital improvements. And then the water system, what are some of the things we observed from that water system analysis, what the resulting capital improvement plan was? And then we'll walk you through that same side on the wastewater. That way you can see ultimately what were all of the assumptions that went into developing the CIP? Because all of them are really important and all of them took, you know, buy-in along the way. So we kind of talked a little bit about our project team. The one person we're missing is Stephen Rhodes. He also worked with us on the wastewater side. So as we're looking at kind of the overall master plan process, so Tim talked about the model. So the, the model is the tool that we're using to do that analysis. So there's a lot of information that goes into that, and so it's really critical that we make sure that the information is as accurate as possible. We, we call it garbage in, garbage out, just like anything else. And so the investment that the utility had made into the GIS was really critical for us to be able to use for the model. Then with those, the other thing we want to do is we want to make sure that that model matches real-world conditions. So we do field testing. We do pressure testing on the water side and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then we do flow monitoring on the sewer side because we're trying to get those data points to make sure our model is matching up to what you're seeing. And then we use that field data to actually calibrate the models so that we feel confident in, in that they're representing that rural conditions. And then what that goes into is that overall kind of planning. As Tim talked about, we're looking at the distribution system. We're looking at the collection system. We're looking at a high level, what kind of plant capacity do we need? How much storage do we need? How much pumping do we need? Now, those first two really get into capacity-oriented projects. The bottom thing where we call it a risk-based assessment, which we'll talk about a little bit later, that's really taking into account condition. Because it's great to build infrastructure, but we also need to make sure that we're going back and investing in, in infrastructure. Obviously, there's been a lot of news stories lately about the impacts of not investing in infrastructure, and so that's one of the reasons that we have that as a component. Now, the other thing that goes into this is obviously those population projections, water demand projections, wastewater load projections. Because all of that is what we're putting into the model to determine what capacity that we need. And so we had a lot, we had a lot of discussion on that. We're going to walk through that. And all of that is then dovetailed together to make that capital improvement plan. It may be that we have a capacity project, then when we look at the condition, we say, hmm, we might need to speed this up a little bit to address both things at the same time. But we, that, the capital improvement plan is where we're pulling all of those different needs together and trying to find an optimal solution that addresses all of the issue, you know, all the different concerns that we have. So that's just kind of an overview of the process. So we'll talk a little bit first about how we developed those connections, the population projections, flow projections, et cetera. So the, one, what we look at typically is we look at what are some potential planning boundaries that we need to take into consideration? So the first part is water and sewer CCN. So a CCN stands for Certificate of Convenience and Necessity. The Public Utility Commission is who maintains these. But essentially, what this boundary says is that Harlingen Water Works has the first right to serve water on, on here, or serve sewer. So basically, a first right of refusal there. So nobody else can come in and say, I'm going to provide water service within that yellow boundary, or I'm going to provide sewer service within the pink boundary without, you know, obviously coming to the utility first in some type of arrangement. So that's, that's a boundary that we took into consideration. Another thing that we looked at was what are some different sources of population data? And, and this was probably something we had the most discussion on initially because as you, you can see, there was a lot of different data and there's a lot of different, especially when it comes to population, it, it became very challenging. We had a lot of meetings with, with the planning department. We're very grateful for the input that they provided into here. But you can see in looking at this, the Texas State Data Center had one growth rate. The Texas Water Development Board had another growth rate. If you looked at, just looking at overall with the county, what percentage growth rate did, you know, did the county typically experience? And then the very bottom one, looking at what if we see what our historical population trend was? So a lot of different data points within here and a lot of questions if the 76,000 really accurately captured what the population was at that time. Now, this is, this is one piece of data because this is saying if we're including growth within your ETJ. And then we looked at, what does that look like if we don't include growth in the ETJ? So if we kind of go back and forth, you can see with the state data center, that difference is 125,000 or 107,000. So pretty significant when we're looking at distributing that. So with, with this discussion, one of the things that we came back to is that a known within the utility is connections. I know exactly how many water meters I have. I know exactly where they are. I can look at what that growth rate has been. And then when we look at a lot of the regulatory requirements, they are all based on meters, based on connections. And so we decided to use, for our projections, that we would look at that on a connection basis because it's very quantifiable. And so you'll see a little bit of, of information on that. So when we look at, what we did was we took the water meters and all of these data points that you see, those are all water meters. And we took it and geocoded it. And we say geocode, that means we're basically just taking it and assigning it to the actual location. So we'll have an address for each of those and we can assign it to that parcel. And so we're able to look at, you know, where is our residential, where are residential customers, where are our non-residential customers? Where is the utility providing service outside of the current city limits? Because obviously, these are things we want to take into consideration. And the other thing we take into consideration too is that water and wastewater have a different base because we have septic systems, right, with the wastewater side. So our water and our wastewater customers are not necessarily one-to-one. So as we're going through and looking at that data, we have to make sure that, that we know exactly where the water customers are and exactly where the wastewater customers are. Are there any questions so far? Absolutely. Yeah, no, absolutely. That is a really great question. So whenever we look at, I'm not going to see if that was my next, it's a little, it's a few slides up. If, if I can pause for just a minute and, and cover it when I get into a couple of slides because I think we'll be talking about that then. Absolutely, no, absolutely. You're right. That, that was a consideration. It's, it's not, when we're looking at the, at the master plan too, we're not necessarily just looking at new growth coming in. You know, as we're going through and looking at the potential for extending infrastructure, sewer lines primarily, you know, we can look at, does it make sense to try to pick up some of these areas that are served by septic? Now, the question becomes, when, what investment, you know, because if you spend money in one place, it takes away from money in another place. So it's, it's kind of that phased approach. So we, we did look at the opportunity for, with new growth coming in, potentially picking up some of those existing customers that are on septic. Absolutely.
We, the questions are coming from the commission or from the board. So. You don't need to leave, but we'll just, so we can move on.
Sure. Okay. Well, so another, another thing that we took into consideration, the previous comp plan that was prepared by the city had identified some priority growth areas. So you'll see in red, we have a kind of primary growth area, and in blue was a secondary growth area. So it's not to say we were going to prioritize and put all of the growth there. It just was another data point into where did the city see, you know, some of the growth coming in. We also took into consideration the future land use plan. You know, as we're looking here, we wanted to be able to look at where's future residential, where's our future commercial? Are there certain things that we needed to take into account as we're looking at developing these future projections? And so I mentioned, you know, you saw the previous graph that was very focused, or the previous two graphs really, that were very focused on population, had a lot of different data points. So instead, we went and looked at water connections and wastewater connections and historically what had the utility seen? And what type of growth rate could that look like in the future? So what you'll see with the blue, you know, obviously before that dashed line, those are all of our historical water connections. And then you can see the projections through that 2040 time period. And then we went through the same exercise with the wastewater. Again, here was our existing data point at that time in 2020, and then projecting through our 2040 time period. So I mentioned that the service areas are a little different. And so you can see it's roughly basically right at 4,000 connections. You have 4,000 more water connections than wastewater connections. So we wanted to make sure that we accounted for that. That is, that is everything. Mm-hmm. That is everything. Now, we did differentiate the water demand. So we have a specific water demand assigned for the residential and then water demand assigned for a non-residential. So we do differentiate on that. But this is kind of looking at that holistic connection. Yes, yes. We, as part of, yes, this is, this does not include them on here. But we did have meetings with the wholesale customers to get an idea of what their projected needs were, both water and sewer. Because we wanted to make sure to include that on here. So the improvements that you see here take that into account, what their future flows and demands are. So that meant turn it over to Matt. Matt's going to talk a little bit about that. What I, what I showed you was kind of the big picture. And so this is going to show how we took that big picture and started to then distribute each of those future connections throughout the city.
To the previous gentleman's question, I think this slide kind of helps answer that. So when we were evaluating where we needed to apply future demand and loading within the system, obviously, we took the previous comp plan into account. But we also wanted to take other factors such as developer interest in specific areas. If they had communicated to the Water Works that they had some interest in either getting water or sewer service, we took that into account. In addition to that, location in relation to existing infrastructure, water sewer infrastructure, also major thoroughfares. Those are typical indicators where it's going to be less expensive to develop. Obviously, if you're closer to a water or sewer line, there's less main extensions that would be necessary to serve that area. And if you're closer to an area that has more traffic, it may be more desirable for, for non-residential type of demand. So this represents the areas that we broke them out in because not every part of town's the same. We have a lot more density towards the center of town, more sparse development or more acreage-type development to the far west and to the south. So we wanted to differentiate those areas as best as we could. So we evaluate those for the, the three different planning periods independently and then apply those populations in a logical manner. So we'd like to talk a little bit about the water system analysis, how we actually evaluated the water distribution system. So this graph represents the average daily demand by user type. So as you can see, the three color bands at the top of, of the bar chart there represent the non-residential type of customers. Those are typically fairly consistent usage throughout the years because they, they tend not to incorporate an irrigation component. What you see is during the summer months, and the, the colored bars at the bottom represent your residential usage. So that fluctuates based on temperature, precipitation, and you know. So that fluctuates based on temperature, precipitation, and you see a response. People like to keep their yards relatively green, and so obviously, they use more water in the summer. That's just one consideration that we have to take into account when we're evaluating what kind of system, how robust a system needs to be to be able to provide service. It's not just an average day. It's all those peaks and all the variation throughout the year, but also the variation throughout the day. So when we evaluate a system, every system has different types of what we call peaking factors. The peaking factor is the difference between the average demand and the maximum demand in a given time period. Now, that time period could be a year. So perhaps you have an average day to max day demand peaking factor. In this case, for your community, it's 1.65. For other communities, it may be far larger. The peak hour peaking factor is the difference between the average flow over a given day and the maximum hour. So sometimes that's earlier in the day, sometimes it's later in the afternoon. For y'all, I believe it's later in the afternoon. When people get home, they do their washing, they do their, their cooking, they're using just more water, and they turn the irrigation, the sprinklers on and things like that. So we have to make sure that when we make recommendations for improvements, it accounts for that peak usage on the peak day at the peak hour, because we don't want to, you know, run the elevated storage tanks dry. We want to make sure the pumps have plenty of capacity to serve those needs. Also, when we're evaluating, it's not just an operational consideration, we also have to account for requirements from the state. So TCEQ is the governing body for many of the criteria that we have to evaluate the distribution system against. The first one is elevated storage. Currently, we have identified that there is a slight gap in total required elevated storage with the current demand per connection. Now, there is a process by which the water works may go through to get what they call alternative capacity requirements. It's an approval process through TCEQ, correct? That may lower the total required amount of elevated storage per connection, based on the historical usage of that community. So they do take community trends into account. So that may actually delay the need for that elevated storage tank to be constructed, but that process has not yet been completed or undertaken. So, still to be seen there. But we are projecting at some point, yes, sir?
Assume the level that we have to build one, and I'm going to.
It's, it's a total amount of elevated storage, so it could be met. In our current plan, we've identified it as one. And when we get into the CIP, we'll, we'll illustrate where that, where we're proposing to locate that tank. We have some good compelling data that will show why it's necessary there. But it's just, it's not necessarily the number of, of tanks, it's the total volume of storage that's necessary. And we also look at high-service pumping requirements. High-service pumping is what actually pressurizes your water mains. So you've got two different types of pumps. You have well pumps, oftentimes, or raw water pumps that pull water from, you know, either a river, a creek, or a basin of some sort, or, or wells. In this case, it's using surface water. For these, for the high-service pumping requirements, this is what gets you the pressurized water that fills up the tanks, that allows the customer, when you turn on the tap, the water comes out with a certain amount of pressure. We've identified that there is sufficient capacity through 2030, but TCEQ has certain requirements. So you have to be within a certain range before you have to start planning additional improvements. So if you can see there, you've got firm capacity. Firm capacity is the total capacity of the high-service pumps with the largest pump out of service. So if you've got three pumps that are 10 million gallons per day, your total capacity's 30, your firm capacity's 20. So we have to evaluate things based on the firm pumping capacity, because they want to, and they want to inject a little bit of conservatism, make sure that all those mechanical components, you can't rely on them 100%. So the expectation that there's a possibility that one of them may not be functioning. So we've identified that, that improvements will be necessary. We are locating those, and I think we'll get into that here in a bit, at an MFR plant. Water treatment, raw water pumping capacity, existing raw water pumping capacity, the requirement is 0.6 gallons per minute per connection. And that's firm. So we're seeing that in 2040, we have a bit of a conflict there. And the treatment plant capacity, again, there's no need for any additional treatment plant capacity until that 2040 planning window, based on the current requirements. Talk a little bit about water model development. As, as Tim and Jessica was talking about, we incorporated the GIS information that was produced by the water works and able to convert that into a different software platform that allows us to create a computational model of the distribution system. For us to make sure that that's, that is accurate enough for us to make projections off of, we have to calibrate the model, use field collected data. For this instance, we used what we call pressure testing. We put pressure devices that record, I think at five-minute or two-minute intervals, five-minute intervals, for a period of several weeks. We collect that data, download it, compare it to the water production facility information, their actual production records. And then we have to make that observed data and the hydraulic model match. Because if they don't match, then we, we don't feel confident that we have a good representation of the system. So we went through that process, and you'll see the two graphs there. The, the observed is the, I want to see, it's, it's hard to read there. I think the solid line is observed, and the hash line is the hydraulic model, vice versa. But essentially, for the locations that we evaluated, we got everything within 3 PSI for the vast majority of the locations that we evaluated. We did use the model, we could toot our horn a little bit, we used the model to identify a large closed valve in the system. And that was kind of like that, that Lymn test, is like, had we gotten the model calibrated properly, we were able to use it to actually identify something that, that the operators hadn't been able to find out in field. And that's what this representation. So after doing so, a TAM lane tank started trending more consistent with what the model would predict under normal, proper operating conditions. And so we felt confident that moving forward with, with adding additional demands to that system, that the system would be representative, and any improvements that we had identified would be, would be justifiable. So for the existing water system analysis, a key component of it obviously is water pressure. If you have low water pressure, nobody likes a dribbling shower, nobody likes, you know, the faucets just, just leak, you can't water your, your yard very well, but you also don't want to have too high a pressure. Too high a pressure can damage, you know, your pertinences within the home, and plumbers, I believe, over 80 PSI, they won't, they won't warranty the work. So the optimal range is probably anywhere between 40 and 60, 65 PSI. For the vast majority of the distribution system, that's exactly where the water works maintains pressure in that 40 to 60 PSI range. So the, the vast majority of customers are receiving kind of that optimum pressure. It's not too much, so the water waste is low. If you have higher pressure, if you have leaks in the system, you can lose more water, what they call that non-revenue water. Well, this helps keep it low, but also have what we consider a good aesthetic to the water pressure at the customer's source.
Plus the minus.
Yes, sir.
Two, four, eight, seven, eight.
Oh, that's, those are, those are the old ground storage tanks, sir? That those, those have not yet been fully decommissioned, but they're no longer connected to the system, in operation with the system.
And there's somebody that went down, into the.
So, based on the way that the system is configured currently, there's no real practical way to utilize that particular asset, but the, but the real estate is valuable, and we have identified reuse of one of those properties for the purposes of getting TCEQ compliance.
The Camelot.
So I, I think the other thing to talk about, too, is, is ideally, in a water system, you know, you want to have, you're, you're balancing pumping versus the elevated storage. So elevated storage, you know, you're filling that, and whenever you have your peak water usage, you should be having water coming out of the pump station, but also water coming out of the elevated tank. That way, you're not always having to pump exactly to meet demand. So if we have, if we, you know, bring these back into service, then we're looking at pumping, you look at energy costs, other types of things. But like Matt said, we are actually on the Camelot site, looking at repurposing that. It actually has a perfect location for elevated storage in the future, and so you'll see that in, in the CIP. So then elevated storage, again, we're not having to pump, we're not having to pump out of that, so.
Is that what you're saying?
The, the future elevated storage tank, we are recommending at the Camelot site. We don't have any recommendations right now. There's not need for something else at the Harlingen Road Ground Storage Tank site. But we are recommending an elevated tank there at the Camelot. And actually, the pressure graph, or the pressure map, yeah, that, that we're going to show, is going to kind of show why that's the priority area for that. I think you'll kind of see some of these colors change. I mean, the, you know, the, the yellow is kind of that 40 to 50, and then you have 50 to 60. So if we look at 2020, that was the previous one. This is 2030. You'll see not a lot of difference. We do have some area there in the far south, kind of south of that Camelot site, that we're starting to see pressures go down a little bit. Now, some of that's really more pointing to, hey, I need more conveyance, I have too much head loss. I have small lines, a lot of dead-end lines in that area. And so I need to improve the transmission capacity going to that site. Very isolated. However, when I get out to my 20-year demands and I look at where that growth is, I start to see my pressures drop below regulatory levels. So I need two things, then. I need not only that transmission capacity, but I also need an elevated tank in that area. Now, the thing that the elevated tank allows you to do is you're not going to have to build your water lines as large, because you're going to have, during those peak demands, you're going to have flow coming from both directions. So that's something that we're trying to balance. We know we need elevated storage. We know we need a line to go out there. So let's, you know, let's look at, try to balancing the size of those lines, you know, for that, so that we're serving growth and, and also addressing some of these, you know, some of these issues. So once we brought, so when we're doing the modeling for, you know, of the system, we're looking at, you know, what is the optimal layout for where these lines should go? You know, which one needs to go first? What size does that need to, you know, be? If I build this in the five-year, what size do I need? Usually, with all of these improvements that we're looking at, we're looking at a 20-year outlook. One, because of how you fund things, and two, we don't want to build something and then find out five years later, we should have built it bigger. So that's kind of the outlook on that side. Sorry, Matt. The other thing that we look into is on the fire flow side. Obviously, that's really critical and, and very important. So to kind of walk you through the color coding here, anything really that's in the yellow, green, or blue, that's all 1,000 gallons per minute and, and larger. And so that's the available fire flow at any given fire hydrant. And for most typical uses, that's going to be all that you need. There may be some anomalies that you have, like an industry or something like that, that maybe has a larger one, and that's when you would want to look at that site. But for the most part, as you can see, your coverage is good. What you do have is a few pockets, and that's that orange, which is 500 to 1,000 GPM. And, you know, those are areas that are, that we've kind of flagged for looking at transmission improvements, maybe some better coverage in the fire hydrant area. But you'll see really the culprit to those, they're all primarily on the outskirts of the system. So you have a long line, dead end, you just lose too much head as you're going through. You know, if you think of trying to continually push more and more flow, you know, through a small straw, at some point, it's, you know, it's going to break. So, and so what, that's why when we're looking at capital improvements, we're also looking at, not only addressing pressure, but addressing fire flow by bringing in some of this looping. So if you have, you know, one sort, one supply line that's going to an area, that's not going to help you. You come and loop it in, now you have flow coming from two directions, and you don't have as much flow trying to come in through that line. So those are, those are some of the things, you know, as we're looking out, you know, at this area, that, those are some of the things that we're looking at. Again, kind of what we're doing with these analysis slides is kind of building the case for why, you know, we have certain capital improvements. The other thing that we looked at, and this is kind of an extreme condition, and that you'll see, the other one, the fire flow, we look at under summertime demands, because that's the worst-case scenario. Worst-case scenario is you have a, you have a fire during the summer, right? Because your demands are high, and then you have fire flow on top of that. Well, with water age, what we're typically looking at is the opposite. And usually, a utility experiences the worst water age type of conditions whenever demands are lowest. You think about it, you're putting water into the system, it sits out there for a long time, and so it just ages, you know, as it's there. Now, I'm, now, we are not saying with this map that everywhere that's red, that you have a water quality problem, because you don't, because your staff is proactively managing that. This is just looking at, at, you know, if I have a winter-type demand condition, my demands are low, and I'm only, I'm not using my downtown plant, I have one source, which is that MFR plant, you know, how old is the water in the system? Now, things that this could be used for is looking at a sampling plan, maybe looking at, if you do have an event, could this be a contributor? So are there other solutions that you can implement as part of that? So again, this is just good data for the water works to have, you know, for further down the road. So, okay. So then, as we're looking at the water CIP, we have kind of some big-picture drivers for this. You've kind of heard me build the case for some of this. You know, we have this capacity for future growth. Obviously, we looked at what capacity needs are there right now, and then what capacity needs are there looking 20 years out in the future. So that gets into lines, but that also gets into some of those overall big facilities. So the elevated storage capacity, which you saw, we talked about earlier, or Matt talked about earlier, and then that raw water pumping and that high-service pumping. So there's obviously two different components. Those are very to, very closely tied together. The other thing we looked at is, you know, as we're going and building some of these lines, are there opportunities to kind of continue to balance the operations of our, of our tanks? You know, we don't want to put in a line, and then all of a sudden, all the flow wants to go to one of our tanks. And then it starves the other one, or vice versa. So, so that's some of the other things we take into consideration. System looping, you heard me talk a lot about that. There's a lot, you know, a lot of areas, obviously, as development goes, you continue to extend your system. And so we need to, you know, be able to look at, where do we need to do looping to kind of address some of those pressure and fire flow issues that we talked about? These are all the CIP drivers?
What is the CIP?
Oh, sorry, capital improvement plan. Yes, sorry, thank you. The capital improvement plan. It's, it's essentially your roadmap on, on the water and sewer side. So, and then the other thing we wanted to take into account, you know, obviously, as the system ages, you know, you have parts of your system that are older than others. So we want to make sure that we're investing in that. We're not saying your distribution of system is failing, we're saying we're trying to avoid that, you know, later on. So we have investments with that. And then, as I mentioned, improving fire flow in some targeted areas, particularly where you have smaller lines. So there's a lot of information on this, so I'm going to, you, yeah, yeah.
So to touch on some of those points, the first project that we have in here, identified as project number one, is to address some of those fire flow concerns and some of the water age concerns by closing some small loops, but also increasing pipe size in some areas where you have older mains, it might be two-inch mains, four-inch mains, and they're just not capable of conveying the amount of flow that's necessary to fight a fire to get in within that 1,000 GPM range. So we identified that as a priority number one. To service, if you recall previous few slides back, where we had those pressure concerns down here in that kind of southeast area, we've identified a couple of different projects to address that. One is obviously project number two there, at the Camelot Ground Storage Tank location, where we're proposing to add an additional elevated storage tank. So it'll get you two things. One, regulatory compliance, but it also gets you that second feed during peak demand period to allow that area to have more water to flow to it. And the previous slide that had the red dots there, it did not include any of those improvements. So that really is kind of the, the base case. And then we build on top of that to identify what all components are necessary to get it back up to an acceptable level of service. In addition to that, project number three, does this have a pointer? Top. That's okay. Project number three, oh, please, go ahead. Oh, that, oh, that is a button, how about that? It's a good button. Yes, sir.
Are those ranked by order of priorities, or is it just?
It is.
By, by priority, but also we group them into different planning years. So we have projects, one through, was it 13, what is it? I don't know what the numbers are that go to the five-year. But basically, we have a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, and then a 20-year plan. So that way, we don't just have a whole bunch of projects compiling all at one point. And then there's certain projects that aren't even necessary, if you recall from some of the previous slides, where you don't get into those regulatory issues until 2030 or 2040. So we want to delay those projects in favor of other ones that are more immediately necessary. Go ahead.
So one thing I'll point out, because I know it'll go into Tim's conversation, I could see, I could feel his eyes boring into me as I was about to talk about this. So we identified, obviously, these improvements based on when they're hydraulically necessary. And obviously, all of, some of these are also driven by growth. And obviously, all of, some of these are also driven by growth. So, you know, the ones that are driven by growth, obviously, you build it when it makes sense. That's the nice thing about having, you know, knowing where that growth was projected, knowing what the growth in connections was, et cetera. We grouped them to correlate with that priority, you know, whether it's an immediate need that needed to be taken care of, or whether it was, you know, triggered by projected demands, or in the case of wastewater flows. Now, when you look at the summary, which is the next page, and Tim, like I said, I know he's going to get into this later on with his presentation, but when you look at this, those numbers are significant. So, it's probably that you look at, okay, what does the, what is the waterworks annual CIP typically look like? I'll be honest, it's usually smaller than this. So, there are some big needs. And hence, some of this workshop, and I think some of the future discussions that are also, you know, going to be taking place of what, how does the utility want, and the city together, you know, want to attack this? So, again, we, you know, we looked at it from an engineering standpoint, but there is a financial aspect to this. That's kind of the, the next steps of this master plan. Is that, Tim, does that kind of cover? Yeah, okay.
That's a subsequent process that we'll talk about conducting a rate study, and I think a lot of decisions about the scheduling depend on the revenue that we're able to accumulate, to gather, or outside funding to complete our projects. So, we, we first saw this plan, and we said, okay, this is, you need to start again. But then, it became clear, they're just giving us when it's necessary. They're not, they're not our rate study expert, they're not making financial decisions for us, they're just making an engineering decision, as Jessica said.
Sure. And what you're seeing is really the culmination of a lot of discussions. I mean, you know, did the list of exactly like this, you know, whenever we, when we first rolled out, no, we had a lot of back and forth, you know, on, on that. Because, you know, there's, as, as, you know, Matt mentioned, there's some significant needs. He's kind of walked you through some of the looping, obviously, some of that expansion of transmission, and then the elevated storage side of things. There's also, you know, there's a significant amount of asbestos cement pipe in the older parts of the city. That typically, with most cities, is problematic, and is usually the first culprit to break, unfortunately. And so, you know, there is, you know, there's an allocation for going through a process over the different time periods, not doing it all at once, but over our planning periods of trying to tackle that in bites. Now, mind you, you know, this is, this is identified kind of a total bucket. You know, that's where there can be coordination that goes between, obviously, one of the most important things probably would be coordinating with your streets program, and where you're going to be going through and doing roadway work. Because we sure would hate to go in at, you know, for a street to be totally redone, and then two years later, be like, oh, man, I really need to replace that pipeline. So, this provides some of that information to start, yeah, to start being able to have some of the, you know, some of those discussions overall. And I think Matt hit Simon, the raw and, and high-service pumping capacity, that's at the MFR plant. And then, you'll see, you know, just kind of some overall extensions, you know, as we look at growth occurring, obviously, we need to be able to provide, you know, that capacity for that future growth. And this, this project's a little further out, but you can kind of see some of these really kind of address some of that 2040 pressure and fire flow issues, you know, that you saw. That's what some of these later projects are. You know, there may be other projects, obviously, that are put in specifically by developers, but these are the ones that we identified that are kind of some of those big-picture infrastructure items that are needed. And we kind of hopped it back up here a little bit, too, of, you know, how does that play out? You can see roughly, you know, 22 million, 21 million, 28 million for, you know, each of those planning periods. And you'll see each of those also, you know, have a call-out for what those are. In the master plan, it has, you know, a lot of description, you know, what's the trigger for this, you know, why do we need this, what were the assumptions? I think one of the important things to note, we look a lot at costs whenever, and costs specific to an area. So, if I'm doing cost estimating for a CIP project in Dallas-Fort Worth versus Austin versus Harlingen, they're very different. And so, these costs were originally done, were kind of based more on 2020 costs. Well, I think we all know what's going on here. So, but, but they were, they were based on 2020 costs, but they also were based on looking at typically, the bid costs that y'all are seeing here were about 30% lower than other areas. So, we accounted for that. The problem is now, as we look at, you know, kind of coming out of supply chain, all that kind of fun stuff, that, that's about a 25% increase. So, it, these costs are actually going to be bigger, and that's something that'll, now, hopefully, maybe some of that settles out at some point over the next several years, obviously, as you're building these. But that's just something to take into consideration. But we, but we do document, obviously, what those assumptions were, so that it's, it makes it easier for Tim and his staff to go through and update those costs, you know, as we're, as he's looking at and laying out, you know, that five-year plan, et cetera. I'm going to pause for a minute on water and see if there's any other questions, because our next topic is wastewater. Okay. No, it's based on present, it's based on present. And so, yes, and so, that's exactly why we want to make sure, in the report, it states exactly what those assumptions were. These were $20, $20 at that time. So, sometimes what some, and of course, mind you, it's a little unique here, but what some will do is they'll look at like E and R factors, other types of stuff. I'll be honest, cost estimating right now is the hardest job, frankly, as an engineer. You know, it, yeah, just talk to any of our design people, and that, especially on the electrical side. That is definitely the very, the hardest one. So, but, so we try to usually be relatively conservative. Obviously, all of these were done kind of pretty early on, I think, in, you know, really in the pandemic, if we looked at it from that standpoint. So, it does, these do not reflect that, but there are ways to go through and adjust those. Again, you know exactly what the quantities are, so it's now looking at, okay, what are we seeing? What is a, what is an eight-inch water line costing? You know, what is a, what is a pump costing at this time period? So, you have all the different components, so it's just a matter of updating those unit costs. Oh, I don't know. We usually, that is usually awash in terms of the water line cost. Usually, that's rolled into, water lines, valve, oh, sorry.
Buy the material, it's about $2,000, but the install is a bit higher when you have the, the valve that goes with it and the lead line. I think we budget typically about $5,000 per hydrant installed.
Any other water questions? And you obviously can ask water questions after we get through the wastewater, too, so.
So, in, in your master plan reports, you do have copies of those CIP plans. I think we provided you with 11 by 17. If you want the bigger size, we can also provide that. Just let me know.
Okay, well, we're going to talk about the wastewater system analysis, and Tyler's going to walk us through this. So, we'll start off with the facilities, and then start going through that same process of, you know, here's the analysis that we went through, and to show you why certain projects were identified.
Thank you. Yeah, so, we're really going to recall sort of the entire process from the, from the water side, and approach the wastewater system very similarly. So, first we want to look at, what are, what are, from a facility standpoint, what are we looking at with respect to TCEQ compliance? So, right here is historical and projected average daily flow into the wastewater treatment plant. So, you can look back in the gray, gray bars, and project it out through the blue bars of the average daily flow. You see the solid black line at the top, that's your permitted treatment, treatment plant capacity. And then, below that is the 90% threshold and the 75% threshold. So, with respect to TCEQ, TCEQ compliance, what you're looking at is, at 75% capacity, or when your average, annual average daily flow reaches 75% of your permitted treatment, treatment plant capacity, you need to be looking into designing something to expand your treatment plant. At 90%, you need to be looking into actually being in construction to be expanding your treatment plant. So, that's why we, we like to start off by looking at the most downstream part of your system and say, all right, you know, projecting out 20 years, do you need to make improvements at your wastewater treatment plant? And based off of really the 2040 plan and scenario, you're getting, you're beyond that 75% threshold where you need to be in design for a treatment plant, and pretty close to that 90% threshold where you need to be looking to make a, a plant expansion. That's really the most downstream part of your system. In order to look at the capacity of everything upstream of that, we're talking gravity lines, force mains, lift stations, this is where the hydraulic model comes into play. So, again, really leveraging that investment into the GIS system, and also a lot of the fieldwork by looking at invert information, or really gathering in for inverts, and putting that into the GIS, so that we can import it into a hydraulic model, so we can get a slope for a gravity main. When we apply some flow to it, we can get a flow rate of velocity, so we can look at whether or not we have sufficient velocity to keep solids suspended, so we're not settling out solids. So, that GIS investment goes very far, especially when we're looking to this wastewater model. But really, what you're looking at isn't so different than just GIS by the screenshot. What really makes the hydraulic model happen is loading it. And in order to load it, we really have to verify the information that's going into the pipes. In order to do so, we, we installed some flow, temporary flow monitors that registered, well, velocity and depth, which then calculates, calculates a flow. Then, we try to match that through calibration, just as we did with the water system. So, that helps us load the model. And then, we get into the calibration, where we're really trying to, you can see in the top, where we're trying to match dry weather flow. In the bottom, you can see a, you know, the little spike right, right there. That's really the response to wet weather. So, we try to capture during the wettest months, you know, what's the response to wet weather events, and we try to match that with certain parameters. Once we have a calibrated model, we really like to stretch it, just as we do with the water model, where we try to imagine, what's the driest day where everybody is using the most water? We like to think of the complete opposite, where what's the wettest day where you're having the most inflow and infiltration? So, the most, the most rainwater that's getting into your system, thus creating that, that peak response. Wastewater is a little different than water, because it actually telling a story of like, if you, if you have a segment of pipe that is constrained, meaning the flow rate going through the pipe is exceeding what the actual design capacity is, what that does is create a backwater effect, which then can result in surcharging in manholes, and ultimately overflows. So, what we looked at here for this existing system analysis is applying a five-year, six-hour design storm. So, in six-hour period, we're applying about 4.2 inches of rain. So, it's, it's a pretty intense rain, which I would ordinarily say it's fairly rare. I mean, you're supposed to get it once every five years. So, I think we started this project where Harlingen received, I think it was either 500 or 1,000-year storm? Every year, exactly. So, we like to, we like to apply a storm that is large enough to, you know, extend your design parameters, but not so much so that you're having dry weather flow issues where you're getting sedimentation, right? The bigger the pipes you get, the slower the velocity, and therefore, solids will settle out. So, we like to find that, that balance. What you can see here, or, yes. Two inches of rain, what would that storm design be? More like a 10, 25-year storm? No, that, it corresponds to a five-year. Five-year. Yeah.
So, the volume is the 4.2 inches. So, obviously, the shape is specific to, you know, to the utility. Now, the other thing, too, one of our reasons for looking at five years, six-hour, is frankly, that is an accepted design parameter from an EPA standpoint. There's a lot of medium and larger utilities, that's, you know, that's what they use. It gets into, it's not even just like a dry weather issue, it's a level of service issue. You know, is it realistic? If I say I'm going to have, I'm going to plan for a 10-inch storm, the CIP that you're going to see all of a sudden gets a whole lot bigger. So, you have to get into, what is a realistic level of service? And from a, like I said, from all the analysis that's been done at kind of the federal and state level, that five-year, six-hour storm has been accepted as.
And just for reference, for the commission here, all the 2019, 2018, those were 100, 500-year storms. All the other ones that we've been getting are these five-year, 10-year storms. So, just to put that in perspective. Yeah. And to piggyback off of that a little bit, is, you know, what's the level of service for your wastewater system? You also have to look at, what's your level of service for your stormwater and even your roadway system, right? If, if your stormwater system is designed for a 10-year, then it's supposed to convey a 10-year. So, do you really want to double up on your sewer system, even though you're not really trying to convey? You're, you're not intending to convey that. But are, are you also wanting to design your system for when your stormwater system is insufficient, and you have two feet or a foot of water above every manhole? Also, probably unlikely. But in getting to this, this map here, what you can see, what you're looking at here is, you're looking at lines and points. Pointing at the lines first, if it's a black, if the line isn't black, what that says is the Q over Q, or the modeled flow divided by the, the design flow for a given pipe is less than 85%. That's that .85, it can be translated into 85%, meaning there's, so there's additional capacity that you can add more customers to. In that, the blue line here, whoop, blue line is saying that it's somewhere between 85% full and 100% full, meaning that there's some addition, there could be some additional capacity, but the, the pipe is not undersized. It is still conveying flow, which is not a bad thing if you're not adding additional customers upstream of that. If you have no additional customers, and you're conveying 100% of it, you, you've designed a pipe perfectly. The more, the bigger issue is really this red line here. That's saying that there is more flow going through that, more flow trying to go through that pipe than the pipe is designed for.
And those are just regular, normal day usage?
Oh, yeah, no, this is, this is for the, the peak moment during that response to the storm.
Okay. This is during a storm event, then?
Correct. Yes. And again, this is all model, model predicted. Some of the locations in which we have model predicted overflows, red or surcharge, well, really, model predicted overflows, we can corroborate with some information from the waterworks, but again, this is all model predicted. So, not every time that there's 4.2 inches in a six-hour period, are you going to receive this, but likely you will. Yeah, yeah.
So, so one other thing we're going to be talking about in a minute, too, is you have a lot of lift stations, and the way that some of them function, it actually causes flow to back up. It's the way that, that the design is currently, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. I think we need to probably look at that map and see. I wonder if it's maybe something more driven by lift station than, than peak flow. I mean, I'd say it couldn't be both, but I think in that case, if, if maybe afterwards, if we can kind of get an idea where that is, then we would be able to see where, exactly what that might be leading to that. Yes, yes, sir. Absolutely. And you can see on, on this, so any of the areas where we have yellow, what that means is that at that manhole, flow is above the top of the pipe, and it's within three foot of that rim elevation. So, depending on what the elevation is at the house, which, I mean, as we know, there's not a lot of elevation change here. So, if, if it's getting up there, it may be back, you know, it may be causing backup further back. So, that's, this is, so this is telling me, if I, if I have a yellow dot here, that means that I'm within three feet of overflow at the manhole. So, I'm within, the red is saying my flow is, is, would technically leave the manhole. But within the yellow, that says that. Sure. So, it's, so in your case, are you saying that it is exiting the manhole in the street, or it is? Okay. Well, and obviously, the, the utility records those, and so, we, we use that to kind of correlate with some of that. So, yeah. Actually, is that the next slide? Let's maybe fast forward to that for a second? So, yeah. Yeah, so. Of course, of course, yeah. Absolutely. Okay, yes. Yes. There, yes, sorry, yeah, there, yes, right where, right where Tyler's pointing. Yes. Now, that is, now, you'll notice, well, you may not notice, sorry. The, there's the part that's, I'm just going to kind of come up close, if that's okay. So. I know. We were trying. It is, it is. So, so you'll see this piece is red, so the line is red. And then, there's a red dot right there. So, that would be a, at the bottom of that, so just below the LS54. And then, we also have some blue going on here, too. So. No, no, that's okay, that's okay. Do, do we want to go to that? Yeah, no, that's okay. Well, let's go, let's go to, because I think we want to talk about hydraulics just a little bit, because there are some complex, this doesn't always happen every place where we have what we call a negative invert. There's just a handful of those, but obviously, that causes an issue, right? But, but the issue that we have is with where some of the, some of the lift station wet wells are, with how shallow they are in places, and then where we're able to have the different pumps come on. And so, do you want to talk a bit more about this one?
Yeah. Well, I guess we'll go back, talk about this briefly, is this, this negative invert, or this negative slope created by an invert, and sort of, I think this speaks, and, I mean, it's connected to the lift stations and all this, is a, a general theme throughout this list, throughout the service area, is that you all have a very high ground table, a groundwater table, to where, when, you know, construction crews go out, they don't, they don't want to go very deep. It takes, you know, you have to, you know, pump out a lot of water, and it fills up, you know, quite quickly. So, you're, it's, it's a constant effort. So, what you're trying to do is try to get in and get out as quickly as you can, to where I think you, you tend to get some of these irregular slopes. I think, you know, pipes also move once, if, if they're not installed correctly. I think, you know, pipes also move once, if they're not installed correctly, they move a little bit. So, and this, you'll, if we actually go back one slide, you can see the jaggedy slopes throughout this, to which we showed that to the waterworks, and like, is it really like that? And they sent crews out, and sure enough. So that's one issue. I think the other issue, to Jessica's point, or really this discussion at large, is, is because of the groundwater table, it actually has a high groundwater table, it actually has an active, it has a buoyancy to it, to where, you know, lift stations will actually float if you go too deep. So in addition to not wanting to put very deep gravity mains, you also don't want to put very deep lift station wet wells. So what you end up having is very shallow wet wells, or relatively shallow wet wells, and your pump on-off levels tend to actually influence the flow line through these pipes. So it really depends on the area, but, you know, the shallower the wet well, the more active response you'll see in the gravity main with respect to the pump on-off operation.
Yeah, I guess to elaborate on this just a little bit more, so, you know, so when we're saying wet well, you know, the flow is coming into, you know, I think it's usually either round or rectangular, just depends, you know, square, et cetera. So you think of it just like a big well in the ground, to be, you know, very generic about it. But, you know, the reason that these pump off-on levels, you know, are important is because this wet well is gonna continue to fill up until it hits this trigger for this first pump to come on. So you'll see what that results in, that you're always gonna have some surcharging going on in this line at some point, you know, depending on how the wet well fills up. I mean, at the minimum, you know, you're going to have, the pumps will pump it down to this level, but then as it fills up, it's gonna start surcharging back, you know? And so you have triggers, this first pump comes on at this level, second pump comes on if it gets too high. But again, you can see that sets this whole grade for that whole line. So that's where some of those challenges are. The other thing, kind of looking at that big picture, frankly, we looked at all of the different lift stations, which, you know, to use a cliche, if you have a perfect storm, you do have a perfect storm of having, you know, just a very flat service area, and then having the high groundwater table. And those are just very, very challenging, you know, working together. So you have a lot of lift stations. So when we looked at where you have that type of condition happening, this is where that happens. So each of those lift stations that you see there, the piping that we have upstream, you know, the red is where it would be below all the pumps coming off, so that very lowest level. So that next level up, if the flow gets up to there, then you have surcharging in all those yellow lines, you know, also. Then, worst-case scenario, if it gets all the way up, let's say you have a really extreme flow condition, if it gets all the way up to where that first level is, kind of between first and second, then you add on the green. So again, you're starting to see that surcharging coming further back in the system. Now, to be able to look at, we've also taken the, so this is, that shows you the magnitude of it. This shows you what that looks like for each of those lift stations, how many linear feet upstream of that lift station are impacted. So you'll see kind of our worst-case scenario is lift station 31. You know, we have roughly 21,000 linear feet, so if you, you know, translate, that's roughly four miles of pipe that are impacted by that. Now, again, this is something we're looking at, we're looking at the capital improvement plan, right? Because we don't want to have the situation as much as possible. So we want to be able to address some of these issues as part of that. Anything else?
So, I'm sure we need more lift stations.
Ah. Yeah. Yeah, he also got.
Yeah, I got it. Everywhere that you can avoid a lift station, I strongly recommend that you do so, because they tend to be expensive to construct, difficult to maintain, they are potential source of failure, it's a failure point, it's mechanical, you've got a very inhospitable environment that you have to deal with. The trick is, if you want to get rid of the surcharging in those mains, it would require additional lift stations, which means that you have a growing expense and a growing number of potential problems in the system. So it's a trade-off. Either you allow a little bit surcharging, if you were lift stations, or you have lift stations everywhere and you have a maintenance nightmare, then you need additional staffing to maintain that additional. So it's just, it's kind of a pick or choose, which one you want to operate with. Given that the service area for the waterworks, it's actually a fairly high number of lift stations compared to other utilities within Texas, but that has everything to do with topology, or topography. If you don't have the grade to have lots of gravity mains and have deep system, then you have no other choice but then to have to pump it.
So you have over 100.
I believe it's 60-something?
62.
McAllen, I'm doing some work for them, I think they're right about 67, but their service area is a fair bit larger. So, yeah, they do have some, a little bit better grade in the way that their system is oriented, from the northwest to the southeast, and so they have a little bit more gravity system. But they recently separated their system and had to reallocate large lift stations to move those flows around to better manage some of that. But even then, they have a lot of challenges and very large kind of regional lift stations within their collection system.
I do want to make one clarification. The issue with those lift stations is that it's not deep enough. The pipe isn't the problem, it's the depth of the lift station. So the solution for those, where you have perpetual surcharging, even under dry conditions, is not to put in more lift stations, you want to replace that lift station in the same location and make it deeper, so that all your operating levels are below the bottom of the pipe where it comes into the wet well. Currently, the pipe is coming in, and you have to operate way above that.
So making the lift station deeper where the water table allows it.
Correct.
Well.
Where's Tim?
You can, you can build in-water table. It's more expensive to do it.
Right.
And soil conditions are another big factor. Here, we have a lot of clays, a lot of silt, we're close to, you know, a river, this is a delta area in the past.
To which my answer always is, it's geology and geography.
That's true.
You can counter that buoyancy, right?
Oh, yeah, you can, you can design for that, you can build it, you're gonna spend some more money, but that's a whole lot easier to do than to replace all those pipes or put in extra lift stations.
I do want to make one more point on the lift stations. Obviously, we've talked about the operation of this. Obviously, that's not the utilities, operational staff is doing that, they're managing it as best they can with what they have. So I don't want that to, obviously, reflect on that, it's what they're working with.
So we file this under life as a series of give and takes.
It is.
So another component that we were tasked with evaluating is to look at the condition of some critical lift stations, some key lift stations within the system. Obviously, there's many of these systems, they pump into other lift stations, so you oftentimes have these chains of facilities that have to be managed, and if one of those fails, then the whole thing fails, and the larger the lift station, the larger the number of lift stations upstream, the more critical it is. So this is a number, I believe we looked at 17 of them when we went out. We've developed a series of parameters that we evaluate lift stations, including parameters like electrical systems, mechanical systems, pumps, pipes, structural components, and the actual general site conditions, how accessible is it? If you think about power going out in a location, you have to dispatch a vehicle to go actually draw that lift station down to keep it from spilling. How easily is, can that be accessed by crews in inclement weather and poor conditions? So they all factor into the proper functioning of those facilities. When we did our investigations, we took pictures of all the different components and all the different lift stations, and then ranked them based on their condition as a value from one to five, and then weighed those different components, because obviously, maybe a valve is not as critical as the pump, the submersible pump that's inside the wet well actually moving those flows. So they're weighting us a little bit differently, but ultimately, what we discovered is that many of the components of the lift stations are very well maintained. There's practices employed by the waterworks that seem to be very good. The electrical systems overall were excellent, many of the mechanical systems were in very good condition, piping systems and field conditions are very good, but there are certain areas where there's some potential for improvement, and I suspect that the waterwork staff had identified some of these locations because there's expectation that there are certain components that required some additional remediation activity. So this chart represents the findings that we found in field. As you can see, we have very good instrumentation, SCADA and alarm, SCADA's supervisory control and data acquisition. Basically, it's a control system that allows telemetry to and from that system. The electrical, MCC and backup power cables are also in generally good condition, pumps and motors are generally good except for one location, but older facility, and I think that's being remediated as part of another project. Mechanical systems are generally very good, and site systems are generally very good. The one area where there could be some improvement is some structural components on some of these older lift stations, lift stations in more remote areas, or lift stations that I suspect that some of those might have been kind of grandfathered in, and you take them from other, from other entities, and they took them over. But generally speaking, if you saw the previous picture, we see some degradation of the interior of some of the wet wells, but that's something where there may be an opportunity to improve those locations if it's also found that those facilities could be contributing to some of those surcharge problems, or could benefit from oversizing to allow for future development on that location. So pass it over to Tyler, we spar CIP.
Before you start, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
I would ask, for the Arlington Water Works system, selling water to resources in these three smaller cities, plus Harlingen, are the engineering considerations between the four cities and all of this that we're doing here?
So we accounted for if it is a wholesale water or sewer customer that relies on the waterworks to provide them service, they were incorporated in our analysis. So the flows generated, like the wastewater flows generated by those towns that are being conveyed to the wastewater treatment plant managed by the waterworks, those flows were incorporated, any flow projections for those entities were also incorporated into our analysis. Yes, sir.
All right. So talking about the wastewater CIP, more fun stuff. Mr. Perez, I apologize again for the color scheme, but it's kind of standard. But I think, to your point, to your consideration, I believe this is largely your area around the Palm Valley?
Yes, west side.
Okay. So, and to talk more and, you know, make matters more difficult in the discussion about lift stations is, especially in the western part of the service area, what we found is, and it's a way to save money, is lift stations, what, and it's not super uncommon, but it's fairly uncommon, is waterworks has lift stations that pump into manhole force mains, so they share a force main. So there could be a time, especially during a wet weather event, where lift stations are trying to pump into the force main at the same time, multiple lift stations. So the difficulty with that is the pump curve for an individual lift station may differ from another one, where the pump curve from one lift station may push against another wet well. To your point, Mr. Morales, is, and I don't know if this actually pertains to your area particularly, but it could, is it forces the pump to operate back on its curve to where it's not really pumping much flow, it's trying to push as much as it can, but it just, it can't, because it's being pushed against by a more powerful pump elsewhere in the system. So it's trying to push out flow, more people are flushing their toilets, more people are showering, the rain's coming in, and the pumps just can't pump against it. So to your area, what we have here, and kind of just shotgun a lot of this, but talk about things more thematically and try to, what we have is two alternatives, and I'll try to contrast between the two. But this is common to both the alternative CIPs, is we have this, I think what we've turned at the Osborne Interceptor, is this gravity main that is actually going to replace, I believe, four lift stations or three? Eliminate three lift stations. To my colleague's point here, is anywhere that you can eliminate a lift station, we highly, or avoid adding an additional lift station, we highly recommend it. So it is costly, but it relieves an issue where you have multiple lift stations pumping into the same force main, to where in a wet weather event, you're pushing, they're struggling to actually operate. You have now, with this project, you have a passive system to where you don't have to worry about potential failure during a power outage. And now you're just reliant on what would be an improved lift station 55.
Is that the issue that, so after having a problem, you'll leave it, or is there other management improvements that you have to do, because that gets pumped to other lift stations?
Right. Yeah.
I guess to give a general idea, you know, we, you know, with the way, we're talking about flow, you know, here's our plant, so everything, one way or another, has to make it here. So we kind of have, you know, a southern route, we kind of have some areas that come all the way around, we have some that comes through the middle of the city, but everything is ultimately needing to end up at the plant here. And so some of those are a series of lift stations together, and that's kind of what Tim and Tyler are talking about, you know, there's a series of lift stations that make it there. So essentially, if you think of like people having tug of war, you know, somebody's gonna win, right? Somebody's gonna be overpowering the other one, and that's how it's working with some of those lift stations, is some of them are just more powerful during a certain time than others. And if they're all doing it at the same time, then somebody loses. You know, if they're pumping at different times, if they're hitting peaks at different times, then you wouldn't see that as much.
Well, what's the fact of the matter? Are we?
We've applied for state revolving fund monies for that. We actually scored highly on that project, but it looks like we're not going to make the 70% grant level, it's probably going to be reduced interest funding for that. We've estimated that at 11 million, and we think we're going to be invited here within a month or two to apply for a loan to deal with that. As we'll talk later, loans are good, but we're not going to get to our end goal with just loans, we're gonna need grant funding.
Yeah. And really, to Jessica's point is, I mean, talking about wastewater, it's really a story of how does it get from your home to the treatment plant? So in looking at, you know, what the resolve of the Osborne Interceptor would be is, it ends up at lift station 55, which is an improvement. Lift station 55 pumps to lift station 75, which also needs pump improvements. Lift station 75 pumps to lift station 76, which also needs pump improvements. Lift station 76 pumps to the treatment plant, which we require headwork, wastewater treatment plant headworks upgrades, as well as an improved lift station. So you see all the downstream effects. Additionally, what you have is this Osborne Interceptor, the main interceptor that goes from Commerce all the way to the treatment plant, is undersized and has irregular slopes. So instead of applying more flow to it and, you know, Little, oh, did I say, yeah, Little Creek Interceptor, sorry. Yes. In order to avoid a holistic improvement replacement for that line, what we have in this alternative, which is the principal wastewater CIP, is a southeast interceptor, which is going to divert flow on the south and southeast side of town, pump across the Arroyo to the wastewater treatment plant. So this is really getting into the contrast between the two, because for the master plan, we provided two alternative CIPs. So this is the principal, and this is really the main distinction. So we're diverting flows south and southeast to the treatment plant. Lift station nine and lift station seven, both were identified as having a capacity constraint to where the distance from these force mains will be much shorter to where you actually don't need improvements to the lift station wet well at all, or the lift station pumps. So they can easily pump to this southeast interceptor, divert flows to the treatment plant. What this also does is provide a gravity solution to where you can install a short-term lift station to facilitate growth in the southwest part of the service area, pump across the Arroyo to the upstream end of the southeast interceptor. So that's really the whole story of how we're getting flow to the wastewater treatment plant without, in keeping one plant, and all the while avoiding a whole improvement to the Little Creek Interceptor.
I have a question to that comment. You've got two plants in your CIP, a new 3.0 million gallon per day treatment plant for 34 million?
That's bad.
Is that the replacement?
So, no, so we looked at two options. So this first option that Tyler's walking through is one plant, so keeping everything going to the existing plant. Now, we're diverting flow around. We also, you know, through our discussions, we said, well, let's look at what if instead of sending everything to the existing plant, we build a plant on kind of the southwest portion?
Okay, so these are two different options.
Correct, correct. So we'll kind of walk through that. And whenever we looked at that, just to also give you some background, we looked at capital costs, we were looking at kind of some operational costs, because obviously, you have two plants, you know, there's some implications with that. But we did, we did look at two different options to provide some flexibility for the utility. Now, the good thing is, with the early part, there's not a lot of difference between the two, so you don't have to necessarily make the decision today. There are, there are some decisions you do need to make, but you don't have to make those upfront. It can be kind of phased in, and then as you get along the way, make that decision of do we stick with one plant or two plants? Yeah, do you want to go? Yeah, basically, what we're showing, this large lift station, is where the second plant would go in option two. So that's why I was saying, so that's why Tyler's saying, you know, you don't necessarily, if you're, you know, planning on bringing flow here, you can push off, you know, doing some of those improvements in this first south area to kind of, you know, take it the rest of the way. So we're looking at a similar site for collecting sewer, I don't know if you can get, I don't see what you want to say on that, but there are improvements that are similar in both options that are needed now, that you have to do either way. So it is, it is probably within the next five years or so, yeah.
Jessica, if you want to go back to the, to that CIP list that City Manager was talking about, do we have a mic that's on over there? That helps, thanks. We got a little radio thing going. So we're just talking about the principal wastewater CIP here, and we looked at a 20-year plan. Initially, the principal was, was looking at taking all of our wastewater from the west and moving it to the existing plant, but eventually you have to upgrade that existing plant. And so through the comparison of two different alternatives, we ended up coming to the conclusion that in both scenarios, beyond the 20-year planning scenario, we kind of looked beyond what their original scope was to look at, and that's what you have in that orange, more orange colored, that last series of projects. Those are beyond 2040, and that's how those are labeled. And in both scenarios, whether it's the principal or the alternative CIP, we're looking at a new wastewater treatment plant, so we're not conveying wastewater 16 miles from the west side of town to the east side.
Yeah, so it's a matter of if you do it sooner versus later. I think that's what Tim is saying. So in this base option, it's outside of the 20-year. You know, when we look at the other option, it's before the 20-year.
It's, it's still out.
Yeah, well, it's still out, maybe your planning's a little differently.
It's close. We looked at the timing, chapter, section 10 in the report, the first few pages of that goes through that whole net present value analysis, and that wasn't part of the original scope, but we kind of forced them into it. But in both cases, we're looking at a wastewater treatment plant that's beyond the 2040. There are some site acquisition considerations, we need to consider that sooner than later. We can't wait for 20 to 30 years before going after and acquiring the property to do that. So both, both plans are essentially the same with respect to the west side of town. It's the east side where we're talking about, the Little Creek Interceptor, which is the main artery of wastewater that goes through the center part of town along the canal. The principal CIP is going to relieve flow coming to that line by constructing another line, which is that southeast interceptor along the bottom. The alternative that we're talking about basically foregoes that southeast interceptor and says, we've got to redo, we've got to do some work along Little Creek anyway, so it says, we're going to do a project to replace that entire pipeline. And both of them are similar in cost, differences of opinions on how we could go, they accomplish the same thing.
Okay, question on the second wastewater plant. Where would the water discharge, and have you considered discharging it into our raw water coming in to be processed? Because probably the sewage, treated sewage water is cleaner than the water we're getting from the Rio Grande.
Most likely it is, yes. Yes, so we did not get down to the level of detail. I mean, obviously, when we were looking at the location, we tried to choose a location that we could minimize, you know, the amount of infrastructure required to convey that. So that was a consideration. You know, do we look at, you know, what is loading in that area with TCU allow you to do that? You know, it was not that level, you know, that's when you would want to get into some more high-level planning. But yes, we did look at, I mean, you notice we didn't put it in the middle of the city or somewhere else, right? We took into account, we need to be adjacent to some body of water, ideally, that, you know, that we can ultimately discharge into.
Because, I mean, to recycle this clean sewage water, I mean, that's the ultimate of water conservation.
Absolutely, well, you're right. Whenever you look into future water supply, that is a potential parameter that can be taken into account. I feel like Tim's going to comment on that.
I want to go ahead and brag on Freezing Nichols, but Freezing Nichols was a firm, one of their other employees, David Sloan, was involved in the Big Spring, Texas wastewater treatment plant. They were running out of water, and so they had an emergency authorization by the state, and they went through a process, and Freezing Nichols helped them with that, to take wastewater affluent. It didn't pump it straight into the water plant reservoir, there was some attenuation through an existing raw water pipeline. That was more of an emergency situation, because they were just out of all water. California has done a lot more pioneering in terms of that, their standards are really high. There's a lot of science, and they talk about log removal, and if you have more types of treatment upstream, the regulations right now would make that extremely cost prohibitive for us to do. But in the future, as water scarcity comes along, I think more communities are going to do it.
Absolutely. I'm trying to think if there's anything else we didn't cover on the sewer side.
Well, yeah, so that was a consideration. So at least part of Little Creek is in both of these CIPs. Tim and his staff communicated to us that they have considerations about the life cycle, the remaining life cycle of the Little Creek Interceptor on this upstream end. So that's, that's part of the reason why it's in the CIP, as well as just adding capacity. Of course, you know, sizing it correctly, such that it's going to receive all, they have B size, so it can receive all the flow that it'll ever have, is the consideration that we wanted to, you know, take into account for the alternative CIP, and that's why it's a complete replacement. So I really wanted to look at it from two angles of, do we have to replace the entire thing? Because it's going to be costly, it's adjacent to a canal, so it's going to be fairly difficult to construct. That being said, it's still the backbone of your wastewater system. So, I mean, do you want to bite the bullet and go for it now, or push it off and maybe have more difficulty later? So that's really, that's the primary difference between these two alternatives. I guess to hit back on that water treatment plant, again, sorry, the lift station and wastewater treatment plant is really, it's in two colors, right? So it's in orange and it's in red. Sorry. And that's for a reason. In talking with the Water Works at the beginning of this, at the beginning of this project, what they really, part of the focus was, you know, how do we extend service into the southwest part of our service area? How do we add more customers? How do we provide sewer service? And it's hard, because how do you, how do you have a plan for what there is very little of, or next to nothing of? So part of adding this lift station in the short term was really just, you know, how do we incorporate, you know, potential customers, potential development in this area at, you know, at time zero, tomorrow? How do you, how do we want to do that? So we want to incorporate some plan, and that's why it's in red. It's difficult, because the really only feasible way is to pump it across the Arroyo to either in, yeah, there we go. In this, you have a lot more downstream solutions that you have to have. It's a, it's a lot of pipe two installs. So in order to even put a lift station here, you have to have all of this installed. In order to have, you know, this lift station in the alternative CIP, you have to have, you know, the Little Creek Interceptor in place, as well as the station nine. So there are improvements that are necessary, but what we wanted to have was some plan in the near term to accommodate some growth in the southwest part of town. What that also does is help you acquire land with the future thought of, you can convert this into a wastewater treatment plant, and potentially discharge either into the Arroyo or back into the MFR intake for, you know, relieve some of that potential issue of water scarcity in the future. So two plans fairly similar, but it really, what, what, what do you want to tackle in the near term? What large project? Preferably none of them, because they're both costly, but which one would you rather go with? So that's really what we wanted to work through with the Water Works.
So I guess looking at the summary, we talked about the water summary, actually, go back for a second. So those were in the 20 to 28 million, you know, for those different planning periods. So sewer, you can see here, it's more like 80. Now, further out, it gets a little, it gets a little better. But, you know, some of this, you have some pretty big needs here. I mean, we look at, you know, the Little Creek Interceptor, that's project A2 there, you know, that's $16 million. You have several $2 million lift stations. We also have allocated in there some of that sewer renewal and replacement, just like we talked about on the water side. You have to do that same approach on the wastewater side. So we have a placeholder for that, but definitely some significant, significant dollars there, but.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the CIP on the left, those projects are listed in order of priority?
Yes, so this is, this is the alternative CIP. We also have the summary for the base one, but yes, these are listed in terms of priority. And especially on the sewer, so on the water, you can get away with, because looping, et cetera, sometimes putting in a line here versus here, but obviously on the sewer, you always have to look downstream going upstream, because I can't put something in upstream that's going to increase the flows, and it makes my problem downstream even worse. So the, so the order of some of these is very critical. There are some of these projects that you can't do before another one. So, and it's, you know, it's laid out in there as to, you know, which ones are contingent on others. But that's, that is a very important caveat on the wastewater, is some of them are very closely related, and the timing of them is going to be critical in terms of how you do it. Now, you know, if you do, maybe, you know, a certain lift station versus another, and they're not related at all, obviously that's different. But if, when you have lift stations in series, you have to, you know, again, tackle that downstream and work upstream, assuming that the limitation is at the downstream side. Is there anything else you want to cover on wastewater? I think that, so we've kind of probably talked about this to death, but in terms of looking at, you know, the differences between the two, these are just kind of big picture, again, either in that main CIP that we showed you, either routing or moving those western flows through that new southeast interceptor, over the existing plant, and again, that partial replacement of the Little Creek Interceptor, or on the alternative, we complete, we have that complete replacement of Little Creek, and then we're taking those western flows through that lift station nine, all the way to, to Little Creek. So those are just big picture, kind of those big differences.
Okay, so looking at your water, projects one through eight, that's 22.6, and then the wastewater, that's 79, let's call that 80 in 22. You're looking at 102 million, right?
Oh, you said on the water side?
Yeah, yeah, on the water, it's, in the red, it's 22.6.
Yes.
Right, 22.6.
Yes.
And on the waste, it's 79.3, let's call it 80, so that's 102 million dollars in 2020 numbers.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So you can see where the affordability side. It's, it's definitely a lot of work. Obviously, like I said, some, some big needs on the sewer side, I mean, you see some significant projects. Like I said, if you look at project one, again, the influent lift station there at the plant, I mean, that's almost 23 million. The southeast interceptor, this is for the principal, that's 11 million. The Little Creek Partial Interceptor, you know, that's, that's six. So just between, you know, those two, that's a pretty, that's almost like $40 million right there. So it's basically a, what is that, like half of, of the CIP, you know, that we have incorporated?
We have some other projects that the COVID fund is going to go to, and we, we've got $16 million, we're getting ready to send the city manager a plan that identifies $16 million worth of needed expenditures, where we think we have a good shot at going after SRF money or getting grant money. We don't want to use the flexible ARPA money to do those projects, because we want to maximize our opportunity for grant money. So we're not, we're trying to minimize the amount of ARPA funds we're using for some of the CIP. Where we have an opportunity to get grant funds, we want to go after those. Hopefully that's clear. If there are other questions, go ahead.
I don't see the money there, we have to enhance and encourage, move, add the drain to the gas leak, that whole area. Where is this?
In terms of wastewater?
Yes.
Would you, would you go back to your slide, your analysis? So a lot of our, a lot of our problems, a lot of our problems in this area here, where you're talking about, you do have, you know, some yellow, you do have some red pipelines where, but this is all drained into this Little Creek Interceptor area. And so if we have problems here, it's going to manifest itself further upstream. And so part of what we're attempting to do, when we get back to the capital improvement plan, is to either upgrade this, or relieve some of the other lift stations that are pumping into it, and send it to this alternative line. So it will have an impact on those areas that you're talking about. Even though we don't have a specific project shown there to address it, it's because there's a downstream constraint that's causing that upstream problem. And, and, right, and not, and not, and not a capacity issue with the pipes or necessary lift station in that area. It may be responding to a downstream stacking up of water, because it can't get to the plant quick enough.
Start at the end, right, and then you work backwards, southeast, so that's why your southeast project is before your Little Creek project, and it starts moving westward, right? Okay.
So if there's other questions, I do have some wrap-up comments, we'd start getting into the question on total cost, what inflation looks like, and what we might need to do to address that, so. You do have some maps, if you want big maps, we can provide those. Okay, let's load the. Okay, all right, so I'm going to wrap this up with some comments, and I think they're pertinent to where we're going. We have talked about a list of projects in $20,000, and those, those cover the conveyance projects. There are other projects that we have at our treatment plants, at our service center, warehouse, and, and our main office building, and so we've identified a number of non-master plan water projects, including purchase of water rights. That's a cost, and we're going to keep purchasing water rights when they become available. We have a raw water line that goes from the main canal to feed the downtown reservoir. That line leaks a lot, and it doesn't have the capacity to meet the capacity that the plant can actually treat. So you can't get the water there fast enough. And so we've been working through a preliminary design on that project. The initial numbers came back at 14, 15, 16 million dollars. What we are proposing in the first five years is an upgrade to, to a portion of that line, where we have most of the trouble and most of the capacity issues. So we can go down through, we have an unfunded mandate through the revised lead and copper rule, EPA is saying that we need to go and survey a bunch of customer service lines, and that's a requirement. We may be able to get grant funding for that, I'm very hopeful, we're going to be pursuing that. So we can go through a lot of different projects here, we have some generator projects, you know, some, some improvements at water treatment plants, including sludge management, and so forth. Now, we get into wastewater, we've got annual manhole rehabilitation, that's a recurring project, and perhaps that could be covered under one of the master plan titles, but we're, we think that's really a separate number. Some generators, some other, where you see negative numbers here, that's where a master plan number is estimated to cost, we're going to do it in-house, and we think we're going to reduce our cost expenditure by that amount. So that's, that's a credit to our construction department. Our lift station 76, we think we're going to have to replace that, not just improve the pump. So that's, we're starting to go off the master plan already, because we're realizing things, we're, we're seeing needs as we look into them. Lift station 33 is one of those that causes perpetual surcharge in its upstream system. We think that can be part of the lift station 76 solution, it needs to be replaced. So these are big numbers, they're not in the master plan right now. The master plan, they're publishing it, they want it to be done, we've, we've kept them on for a long time, but in, in a sense, it's a living document. As needs and priorities change, we can bring on new projects. We've had a discussion with the EDC about territory up in the northeast side of town, and if, if some of those priorities come about, and we see those as higher than what we've got on the master plan, we can make those adjustments. So some of that's already starting to happen in what's off the master plan schedule that, that you have. We have other customer meter and facility projects that are, that are substantial. So pulling those all together, if we move to the next So pulling those all together, if we move to the next slide, we're going to see our combined CIP with master plan expenditures in this column. Down here, this is basically summarizing that differently by short term, saying this is the total of all categories, water, wastewater, meters and facilities at 102 million. I think that was the number Commissioner Mesmar was talking about before. In our five-year plan, there's another $30 million to add to that. So now we're at 132 million dollars where we have current needs. We're not going to be able to afford that. We have an excess of revenue above our operating expenses. It's been about $5 million is projected for this year. Next year, we think that's going to be lower, perhaps 3 million, even less. You can't do much CIP building for $3 million of revenue a year. So something's going to have to be done. So our grand total, looking out, you know, these are, these are longer-term numbers, but when we're looking at a five-year plan, these, those, those are pretty certain that we need to do. We're not going to be able to do them unless there's a lot of external help. We talked about 2020 dollars, so this is what you just saw here. What we did is we took the 25% escalation from 2020 to midpoint of 2023 and said, well, we're going to have some continued inflation, and these are just my assumptions, putting in another 4.5% year, per year to the midpoint of that five-year plan. So you add up that total escalation, which is an estimate, you're coming up with 177 million dollars in a five-year plan. We're not going to be able to fund that without a lot of external help. So that's to give you an idea of how things are changing, going from 131 to 177, and that's just to get us to, say, 2025, 2026. And so we have been applying for financial assistance with the Texas Water Development Board. They are the administrator of almost all the federal funds that come for water and wastewater through their state revolving fund program. There's also a Texas component that's called the Economically Distressed Areas Program, and Harlingen is a community based on annual median household income and its relationship to the state's average. We are in a disadvantaged category economically, and we would qualify for grant funding. The EDAP program will provide a 50% grant, perhaps even up to 70%. So we pursued both the SRF and Economically Distressed Areas Program funding for some sets of projects. This wastewater treatment plant headworks, which is the far downstream end, interceptor, whether that's southeast or Little Creek, in either the primary or the alternative system, we put in a package asking for 64 or 68 million dollars. This project actually did score pretty well, but not well enough to get grant funding. Lift Station 55 and Osborne Trunk to solve those issues out on the west side of town, estimated at $11 million. That's an escalated number, and that's an escalated number, too. So we, we built those into our applications. We also put in for the raw water pipeline at 10.5 million. That was our estimate, the engineer's estimate on that has now come in higher. Our wastewater treatment plant sludge handling improvements, 4.6. In the Clean Water Intended Use Plan, they've come back and said, we've scored your projects, and these three wastewater, well, these two wastewater projects essentially are scoring high enough that we're going to be offered a reduced interest loan. And that's helpful, better than a market loan, but it still is going to be a big ding on our bond capacity. We're not going to be able to take out that kind of a loan, and so we're going to have to have some help. A higher score, and there may be some things we can do to score more highly.
There's not a lot that we can do.
Typically, their scoring is based on some existing problem at your plant, or documented overflows, or enforcement action, and those are, and we've avoided that to, to a large extent. But a lot of smaller communities have, you know, even bigger problems than we do, and so those are the ones who've, who've been, were going to be awarded a 70% grant component. We thought going into this, it was going to be 30, but the state or the Water Development Board changed that. So what I think that we should do is pursue some of the loan funding for the preliminary work, the design, acquisition, and planning. Once you're committed, then you come back the next cycle and say, look, we have implemented an asset management program. We get a few points for doing that, but maybe in future rounds, we might qualify for that 70% grant. That would be a great thing for us if we could do it. We initially thought, wow, we're going to be funded for grant, but there's only so much money in the pot that the federal government has allocated to the SRF program. So the next, you know what, I keep going back here, and I've got the power. So our path forward, we want to continue pursuing assistance, financial assistance through the SRF and EDAP programs. I think we've covered this before. Prioritizing grant funding is going to be essential because without grant funding, it, our master plan is not going to be a five or 10 or 20. It may be a 30, 40, 50-year plan, and we're going to need some help. I, I think this next line here really defines a strategy for us.
Tim, one, one question.
Go ahead.
So applying for these loans or applying for these grants, even though we didn't get them, are, have we secured kind of like a place marker or something for the next round? They consider that?
Right. I think what we should do for the projects that we've scored on, those, those wastewater packages, is to begin some preliminary work, utilize their funding. Now you've got that relationship. You come back the next year and say, well, we want construction funds because we've designed it. We're already in partnership with the Water Development Board. There may be some tie-in there that helps us get to that 70% grant funding level. I, I think the other component here, and, I mean, this is beyond, this is beyond me, but I, I think we're going to need as high power to help as we can to solicit federal and state representatives. There is been some discussion with the bipartisan infrastructure bill, which provided some funds, that, that was going to, to, to help. What we found out is that earmarks have not been part of the SRF program for quite some time, but it looks like earmarks are coming back into it, which means enlisting some legislative help might be beneficial for us to do. I don't want to get into all the details there, but I think the challenges that we're faced with, we're going to need some help, and it may not come through the traditional application process for SRF funds. So I think we need to focus a lot of effort there, and we'll need the board's help and the city's help to do that. We are planning, now that we've got the foundation of a master plan, this is defining what our future is. It's really foundational for a lot of things. We're going to start with the rate study. We've got that actually budgeted the current year, but it won't begin until 2023. A rate study and an impact fee study, looking at some very comprehensive questions, and at that, and in, as part of that process, we're going to have a lot of discussions and perhaps a lot more workshops between board and commission to talk about questions about how fast we can do our CIP and establishing revenue requirements.
Sorry to interrupt you one more time. I did get, that a question right now was a really good point. In applying for our grants, are we considering, you know, EDAP, are we considering combs and Primeta and all the other, you know, other low or the economically distressed communities around us that we provide wholesale to as part of our grants?
They are their own entity, and actually, their connection to our system was funded through an EDAP project. I, I don't, I, I don't think, I mean, it's, it's a good question. I would suspect it's, it's improbable that we could use them to help use their bargaining.
Occasionally, sometimes some of the factors on the SRF side are, are you a regional system? Does it impact multiple? Now, you know, would it take into account economics on that side? Not necessarily. But if it's something that serves more than one entity, that sometimes does push you a little further up from, from what I remember. Mark's the expert there, but yeah.
You know, to the extent that that might be an option, I, I think we'll look at that. That might, that might be a good key because when you talk about scoring better, if you've got some regional impact or influence, maybe that does, maybe that would help us put us to the next level. So coming out of the rate study, we're going to have to make some estimates of how fast we want to do it. Do we want to go aggressively? Do we want to go moderate? Do we want to take it slow? The faster you go, the more help, external help you need, or your other funding source comes through additional revenue that you generate from your water and sewer rates. And so this is going to be big decisions, and these are decisions that the board and commission are going to have to make. You've seen some of the numbers, and, you know, there's a balance between how much you're going to get funded from federal and state sources and how much you're going to have to come from your, from your local community. So there, there will naturally be some additional revenue that needs to be generated. Unlike the city, inflationary trends help increase the value of goods that are sold. You have sales tax revenues that go up as inflation goes up. As property value goes up, your ad valorem taxes also go up. In the water and wastewater business, there is no natural mechanism. You set a rate per thousand gallons, and inflation will erode the value, the relative value of that. And so you're periodically having to adjust your rates continually. Well, not continually, but you can do it every year, set one rate. We're not here to talk about what that's going to be, but the rate study is going to be bringing in a consultant who's looking at all those factors, looking at financial considerations, and helping our board and city commission to wade through those questions about what additional revenue. There was a, we have not had a rate study for quite some time. It's been well over a decade. In 2014, there was a water change. There was 3,000 gallons that was included in the base rate, and so that was gradually taken out so that you pay a base rate. That's your ready-to-serve charge, same rate for everybody for given meter size, and then everybody pays the same amount per thousand gallon. So there used to be some free water, so to speak, included in the base. So that was started in 2014, and I think wrapped up in 2015, maybe, 2016. On the wastewater side, our base rate was $2.16, which is, I mean, just really super low. And so the decision at that point in time, between 2014 and February of 2018, there was a 10 cent increase in the base rate for 40 consecutive months. And so that's gotten us up to a better rate, but it's still relatively low compared to other utilities. So there was a change then. That did help us with some revenue, but it's now been, since 2018, we're now five years distant, and by the time we get through with our rate study, we'll be six years removed from that last adjustment.
So aren't our water and sewer rates some of the lowest, if not the lowest, in the valley?
They are. I, I think Adalgue County, you know, has some, some communities in the McAllen area that kind of bust the curve, but if you're looking at Cameron County, we're, we are lower, I think, than everybody. For reference, Brownsville Public Utility Board recently approved a water and sewer rate increase, I think 9% was effective in June. They're going to do another 9% on top of that in January, and then of 2023, and then for the next three years after that to 2026. By the time they're done, their total average customer bill is going to be 56% higher than our bill. That's by 2026, if we do not adjust our own rates. So that's, that's a reference point to, you know, understand where they are. Their conditions, you know, are different than ours, but this, this rate study and impact fee study is going to help us think through that a lot more clearly, much more clearly than I can, and, and so we're looking forward to that, but I'm, I'm, I'm making, I guess, making known that we're going to have a difficult process coming up. That's all we had. If there's any questions, certainly welcome.
So we don't have any questions? Everyone's tired? A little depressed? Okay, well, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much. Thank you, Tim. Thank you to the, to the consultants. Very informative. We appreciate you.
We had some exhibits that we'd done in black and white.